Council Biden.
President.
President, Council Kingdom.
President.
President, Council Capano.
President.
President, Council Calucci.
President.
President, Council Creighton.
Present.
President, Council Seer.
Present.
President, Council Ford. Absent, Council Lozey.
Present.
President, Council Neff.
Present.
President, Council Bailey.
Present.
President, Council Trahan.
Present.
Present, ten present.
Can we all please rise from home in silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to any matters, I just want to point out that Council Ford had an unexpected family matter, is out of the area this evening, and wanted to pass on his regret for not being able to attend.
First, item on the agenda is the reappointment of a Lynn Water Sewer Commission member.
And who is the Water Sewer Commission member now?
William Trahan.
This will be a voice vote of the members of the council. Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Keiko.
Trahan.
Trahan, Council Capano.
Trahan.
Trahan, Council Calucci.
Trahan.
Trahan, Council Creighton.
Trahan.
Trahan, Council Capano. Trahan, Council, I'm sorry, Council Creighton.
Trahan.
Council Seer.
Trahan.
Trahan, Council Ford. Absent, Council Lozey.
Senator Trahan Senior.
Trahan, Council Neff.
Trahan.
Trahan, Council Bailey.
Bill Trahan Senior.
Trahan, Council Trahan.
Present.
Present.
Communications, we have one communication from Richard Fortucci, City Treasurer. Dear councilors, the following property has been sold and will be placed on the city's tax roll, please adjust your records accordingly, line 95, Brandon Street.
Jump to the file. Motion made, seconded, discussion. All those in favor, opposed? Motion carries, public hearing.
First, public hearing is the fiscal year thirteen budget hearing.
Like the hope for a public hearing for anybody who should speak in favor.
Judy Kennedy, twenty-three, Buchanan Circle, Mayor and presenter of this budget to your body. This budget, you will see, had contained one percent increases approximately for every department. That's what I told them they could use as a little bit of padding, considering we've had such austere financial times in the first two years that I did the budget. So I figured this would give them a little bit more flexibility. Other than that, my own department is down about six thousand dollars from last year. You will see that we finally have a line item for the vegetation treatment in Flax and Suce Ponds. There's a little more realistic building repair and maintenance in the inspectional services department. It is increased by four hundred thousand dollars now to, I think it's eight hundred thousand dollars or thereabouts. So I think this is a very good budget, it's well within our means. I did submit to everybody, and I am sorry for the late notice, an additional three million dollars in the reserve fund. This came about as a result of some negotiations that are ongoing with different unions in order to settle the contracts, and want to make sure that I am able to fund those contracts at the time that they're signed. However, I don't anticipate that any of them will be signed before the end of this fiscal year and the beginning of the next fiscal year. The reason why I have to transfer it into the reserves rather than letting it sit in free cash is because on June thirtieth, our free cash account is closed. Everything then has to go back to the state and cannot be touched again by the city until the state recertifies that free cash. And that won't take place until fall. This year it didn't even take place until April, which was unusually late. In order to ensure that we are able to fund any contracts that are signed, it was necessary for me to increase the reserve fund by three million dollars, which is what you had before you tonight. Everything else within the budget is the same as the one I submitted a month ago. And I think it's a good budget, and here's speak in favor of it. I'll be available for questions once you get into discussion.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Let's wish the council. Um, yes, this open for discussion. Council Calucci.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I guess we discussed that what's that ordinance for trashes? What's he ordered for trashes and got, you have the money for?
Yes.
I believe people have, I guess, some help, I wish you, also, can you do that tonight?
Well, one of the reasons why I am waiting for the trash ordinance to be finalized before I release any additional money for the road control is that one of the ideas that I floated at the ordinance committee meeting today was to institute a fee for pickup from absentee landlords. It's something that you can decide, you know, talk about the fee, talk about, you know, how often that fee is collected, from whom that would be collected, but that money would give me a stream of revenue to pay for additional inspectors. It makes sense, rather than taking it, because that becomes a salary item, and I don't want to take salary items out of the reserve fund, those should be more for one-time expenses. So I'm perfectly willing to increase the road control dollar amount, I just want to see what happens with the trash ordinance first. And then, I promise you, you will get an increase in funding in the road control line item.
Thanks.
Okay.
Council Seer.
Thank you. I agree with what you're talking about, the ordinance meeting, all the laws attached with the trash pickup, those of the neighbors. But as Mike Donovan said, even if we had a twenty period of funding, fifty thousand dollars to that fund, that he needs another body to work there enforcement. So, for my concern, as Council Calucci just said, it's going to take a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to fund that position. If we can use that money that we generate from the mall and get fines, but we need to have that extra body to work its enforcement. And so I'm looking at it like, say, you're going to put the money there, but you don't want to take it out of the reserve.
You can, I'll take the advice of the council, I'll listen to all of your suggestions about where you think it would best be used, I'll listen to Commissioner Donovan about it. If you think it's better used on inspections rather than on the actual poison, or the baiting, bait boxes, or anything like that, that's all looking for discussion, but I think it's really premature to just throw some money at it until we have a workable trash ordinance.
I disagree with you, because we have a problem now that's increasing, I would take two to three months to get that trash ordinance passed. In the meantime, we have neighborhoods, especially in the summertime, with long weather coming, that are being inundated by the rats, is the biggest public safety issue in the city right now. Doesn't just affect my ward, my neighborhood, it affects the entire city. We have to act now and respond now, and wait for trash ordinance to get passed, and I'm going to have to take a look at it, and then create a position, but do it going after the day. To me, as a council, it's not acceptable. I disagree with you.
Well, I've asked for ten months for a trash ordinance. I vetoed it back on July first of two thousand and eleven. I started the line item in September of two thousand and eleven, that this council was working on a trash ordinance. We need something for the people to understand before we can go out and find them. So that's why I'm saying, you've had ten months, as soon as that trash ordinance gets passed, we'll look toward whether we're putting money into enforcement, bait boxes, I'm open to all kinds of suggestions.
So if all the plaintiffs gave a push for favor, I'd say, it's your fault that the ordinance isn't passed, or that we got rats that are continuing to go into people's backyards. I just, I think we've got to respond now and not wait, you know?
Bob, who's Trahan?
Thank you. I just go, I don't know, I'm just uncomfortable on this, but I just sat with the mayor, we just had a really nice conversation. What I'd like to do is pick a few of us, we go in, the mayor said she would do this, we can sit down with her, maybe invite some of the business community that were just there earlier, down this week, and maybe just sit down with her and talk to her about if she's willing to listen to us, she's willing to put, you know, money there for us, but I just think we need to all sit down in one room and work this trash ordinance over. You can't just keep refining it, bringing it back to her, and then if she doesn't, if she doesn't like it, it gets vetoed, let's just all sit in the same room. You know, we can't go ahead and go on, but if we can pick three or four councils, they may as well consent with us, and I just want to run that by everybody, let everybody know that we can, we can do this together, but it's just not, go back and forth and play with her for the last ten months. I don't, you know, agree, I don't disagree with Council Seer, I, we have to get it done right away, but we need, so the best way to do that is for us to work together, and I think that, that's the point that we're at. They may as well sit with us, I just sat with her, and that's something that I'd like to do by the end of this week, on the first event, if she's available, or she's busy, or we're all busy, but I'd be willing to sit in the meeting, I know anybody else that's willing.
Council Seer.
I agree. I'm all, just, I think we should work together.
That's fine. I want to come to a solution.
I got excited, and I want to, Council Trahan said, I want to come in, sit down, and work with you, and I want to try and make this happen, so.
I'd like that.
Very much.
Council Capano.
I, I know I'm beating dead horse, and we've been talking about this for a long time tonight. I'm willing to accept all the mayor's recommendations, if we can get another inspector and some, you know, more money for road control. I mean, I really want this, I don't want it because I want to break the budget, I mean, I really care about the constituents in my ward, just like everyone else here, and, and the mayor, I mean, I really think it makes a difference. I mean, you need the money, you need money, like I said earlier. We're getting really good at finding out the cost of everything, but we're losing what we consider valuable, I mean, is valuable in happiness. To have a big impact, we're going to have to spend more money on this. And, you know, I own emotions, but the veteran of us earlier, I really don't know why, we should be able to talk about this with whoever we want to talk about this, not be worried about repercussion. We should have an open forum and be able to express ourselves without finger pointing or anything else. I want to sit down at that meeting, I want to be at that meeting, and I want this to work. We all want what's best for the city, let's get it done. We've had a lot of communication, we communicate a lot, our problem is execution, we can't seem to execute together, we need to, we could use this issue right here, right now, to prove to everyone else that we can work together, let's do that.
Council Creighton.
Mr. President, three and two members, I agree a hundred percent with Council Trahan, we need to execute, that's, that's why I have concern with the commission, I know that there's a lot of people on, on the council and in the public that would want to be a part of such a commission, every commission that exists moving forward, and I love the concept, I love working together, I love discussing ideas, but something needs to happen, and I think we continue, I mean, this is a big one, I just don't know if it's the best idea to start another commission, and who's to determine who's on, who's voice will be, so that's just a concern that I have. Thank you.
Council Keiko.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a non-road question, but if anyone else has more road questions, I will yield my.
Council Trahan.
Thank you, maybe Council Creighton misunderstood, I don't know, did you think I wanted to start a commission with the mayor?
I thought that, I did, I thought the deal was discussion about having.
No, no, we talked about having a few of the councilors in, so we don't have a war, we just have a nice conversation about this, she's willing to spend some money to help us, okay, you know, she is a problem every day like we do, probably one of us, sure her office gets inundated with it too. So she's willing to sit down with a few of us, in her office, we'll bring in everybody that we need to, Mike Donovan, the whole, whoever wants to come, invite us, let's work on this trash ordinance, let's just get it done, and I'm talking about it, get it done.
If I could just add, if the council president would be more comfortable calling it as a committee of the whole, inviting myself, members of the Chamber of Commerce, interested citizens, and just suspend the rules about the public being able to speak at it at the meeting, we can have a very open and engaging conversation with all of us present. I'm perfectly willing to do that.
Absolutely willing to do anything it takes to address a problem that doesn't appear to be a pet project of anybody, so everybody seems to be on the same page, so it doesn't make sense why city government can't work collectively and together to get something done. So I think that's, any of these options, I think are wise, as long as we do it expeditiously.
Council Trahan.
I have one more thing for the mix, I just, I just want everybody to understand that you have to be able to give and take, you know, I know, maybe you're going to have stuff that you're not willing to, might have to swallow, and we might have to, but I think if we all just give and take a little, we can do it.
My life would be much easier if we didn't have a single rat woman, believe me.
Are there any other questions at this point for the mayor? Council Keiko.
Thank you, Mr. President, again, non-road related, anyone?
We don't want to be the dead rat.
No, I just want to say more dead rats. I have a number of questions for you regarding your budget, and I think all of you have done a good job, and I don't think anyone ever accused you of being spent, correct, by any means. That being said, could you talk to me a little bit about how we're funding our schools, and whether we're making or needing our required spending, and if there's anything from the city side that we can do, go above and beyond? Because I know this body has in the past, as you remember, especially when you remember, may committing to above and beyond what state requires. I'm just curious, what your process was, or thought process was, coming together, and that was dated against the.
Well, we exceeded our minimum on net school spending requirement, right, Mr. Fortucci?
We were close.
But we did exceed it.
I'm not sure if we did, no, I mean, we were way along the course.
But, in any event, we have also increased monies from the city side, such as the funding for the design study for Marshall Middle School, that came out of the city side budget. There's four hundred thousand dollars in moving expenses associated with the administrative offices moved to Bennett Street, that's going over to the school side. So we have been assisting them with some of the larger dollar amounts. As I said, we increased the building maintenance and repair line, it's more than doubled what it was in FY twelve. And the city has also put forward a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in matching funds to get the breed and wind tech, window and roof repairs going. This is all in addition to the excess included in the maintenance costs for FY thirteen. The schools also got, I believe, a seven million dollar increase in state funding on their end. So the schools are in good financial shape, they actually have more flexibility right now in the city side.
I would agree with you, looking at the, at the state website, the amount of money the city's contributing for the requirements, there were some years that were tough, looks as though two thousand and nine, there was a deficit of nearly thirteen million per cell, because at the time you were coming in, and there happening some deficits, it looks as though this year we are right up there. Council, I'm just curious if there's been any discussion about any programs that we'd like to bring back, or maybe we have not had in the past anymore? You know, I know, tennis is a huge machine in the past, and there was a way to provide some additional funds for some, I only know the experimental programs, trying to get kids into school early, or something like that, and I don't think law and school committee stuff, I'm not in the school committee, but I'm just hearing some concerns, especially when we have, you know, what the papers report to be a healthy surplus. I think in all councils, we get a lot more questions about why aren't we funding certain things?
Well, there have been a lot of increases in new programs, right, even during the summer, we're running Camp Bulldog and Camp Ran for incoming ninth graders over at Classical and English, hence the names. They are given there some reading to do on iPads, they have the ability to take notes and look at other students' notes who have been doing this, and then there's some theater arts classes, sort of enrichment classes that they have for those, but they're running those programs full days for two weeks, I think, this summer, as sort of orientation session. There's been some talk on the school committee side about Reviving Project Learn, that was always a very successful program. But they do have plenty of money right now to start to look at some of those programs, and if there are any that you would like to see either revived or tried out as a pilot program, so the school committee would be interested in hearing about it.
So you're, just for my own satisfaction, you're satisfied with the level of your budget?
Yes, I am.
For what we can.
Yes, I am.
I know, obviously, you want to spend three times.
Well, I have to allocate it, you know, given the subsidies that the school department is given in grants, millions and billions of dollars in federal grant money, state grant monies going into the school department, and again, that additional boost of revenue from the state this year, I felt that we were comfortable in maybe getting up to our required number without having to exceed it.
May I, if you want to talk about somebody else, is there a question? Council Keiko.
Madam Mayor, I always, December, talk about this a daily, because we set the tax rates in December, and we all have, you know, I make the argument that we need to be physically responsible in June in order to offset any types of increases in December. And I, whether I'm a pundit or not, I wrote against tax increase last year, I find tax increases are residential and commercial, poorer areas to be aggressive, because the higher the industrial and commercial tax rates, the less economic development, higher residential tax rates, higher rents affect the poor people. So my question today to you is, I know this is far in unforeseen catastrophic event, but we need to make a one-time surplus payment. With those surpluses that we have, free cash, whatever you want to call it, is there, in your mind, a policy for that this December, we are not going to see the tax increases that we've seen in the past, are we going to use some of that revenue?
Actually, last year was the lowest tax increase that we had in eight years.
When it was in eight years, to be fair.
It was eight cents per thousand dollars, it was a very small increase. But for all these services that you want, the way that I obtain that revenue right now is through tax collection. You know, let's see what happens with this trash ordinance, if we get the trash fee, maybe I no longer have to fund that second inspector that you want to have, maybe that money will come from a new source of revenue. I don't know what the tax increase will be. If it was going to be a significant tax increase, I would consider looking at some of that free cash, certainly not all of it, because the city needs a rainy day fund, a stabilization fund, but if it meant giving some relief to the taxpayer, I would certainly consider it. But I can't promise you that there won't be a tax increase.
Well, and I wasn't criticizing you for the level of, it wasn't, it wasn't known, but again, and I think the concern is, you know, Lynn is not necessarily a question, where, you know, large sums of money are common in their reserves, where, you know, I feel from, from people who speak to me about it, they see the money and they question why their costs are going up in a down economy, and I think what they're just looking for is the sense of relief, regardless of the amount of money, I think it's also the perception of it going up, and their concern that this, that stockpile of money is stock right there, their tax money, that they would much rather have had, probably pay other bills, but again, I don't want to be the flip of the floss off of the baby anymore. I'm just hoping that, I, I would like to know if I have to cut this budget here to make sure that we have enough money in December not to do any significant tax increases.
I think this budget is about as bare bones as it can get, and still increase the services that people have been clamoring for. We have the six new CLT officers, the bike pops on the street, they cover the entire city now, but that didn't come without some expense, and I mean, they, by the time you count in their benefits and whatever else, it costs us almost a hundred thousand dollars per person, which means that six hundred thousand dollars had to come from somewhere. And as I said, the source of the city's revenue for the operating budget, and I don't want to get into a philosophical discussion either, but the operating budget is generally, the bulk of that money is generated from tax revenues. The stabilization budget is not the operational budget, so I'm hesitant to mingle the two, but we'll see what happens, we'll see what happens when we get the assessments in the fall and we start to look at the tax levy. But it really should only be used for one-time purposes, not for operational subsidies.
Of course, ma'am. Now, my other point, you requested that all the departments increased the budget by one percent, which is very, very.
They all got the message from the CFO to submit.
Um, here at discussions, and I know that you were here with Councilman AJ, the woman at first didn't seem to think that, just didn't know about the one percent, so she didn't get the one percent, is there something we could, is there a reason for that?
No, she was given the same group email that every other department had was given, I believe.
I'm not sure if there was a communication with her, ma'am.
Oh, she wasn't on this?
No.
I was just, maybe even, it's a small, it's a very small line item, but maybe if there was a way that we could agree that she gets her one percent, just because of equity, and it's really, I think it's a hundred thousand dollar line item.
I'll send the financial transfer up to you, the next financial level committee.
Council AJ, I know that's a long, prolonged years, and just my final question, and this is kind of a discussion for, I guess, everyone, the one dollar positions that we put. So you know, we got a little bit of trouble, or not trouble, I guess, miscommunication on the social plan, everyone, I guess the follow-up was misunderstood, there was some misunderstanding on our end, it was a communication that had fallen. So I'm looking at this budget now, I'm trying to think, what would somebody from the public look at when they, when they view the budget online? And say, well, and I know sometimes we don't break down the positions, but they'll say, why do we keep positions open for a dollar? I understand the premise, okay, it's just we're open, therefore people can, department head's included for it, it's almost avoiding a stop on the city council bus, would you say? I would be inclined to eliminate those two positions. You wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't put anyone at work, what it would do is require the department head, if he or she decides to put that position, to employ someone in that position, to go through the proper channels, instead of having, maybe one last step to go over. What's your thoughts on that? You were city council for many years, and I'm sure you have the same question looking for a dollar, so would you be opposed to us doing that today?
I think, in a lot of ways, it becomes unnecessary for the council to have to re-approve a position that had already been approved in the past, and if we did take that dollar out of that line, that line would disappear, and then every time the city found itself in a situation where, for example, they might have another, you know, twenty or thirty thousand dollars to put another junior clerk in, in the purchasing department, who would have to be going to the city council to approve a position that the council had already seen fit to approve. So I would tend to disagree with you, I think it puts an extra step into something that otherwise doesn't need that step. And you always have the ability to defund that position at budget time, if you feel that it's not an appropriate decision.
Curious. Thank you, ma'am, I have no further questions.
Council Lozey.
Mr. President, thank you. I would just like to commend and thank Mayor Kennedy for including the line item funding budget for needed treatments and improvements to our only two recreational ponds in the city of Lynn, Flax and Suce Pond. It may be a more than one, but hundreds of residents throughout the city enjoy boating, swimming, fishing, and other recreational activities. So I think that these funds will ensure that these activities will continue, and the quality of the assets of these ponds will, will continue, and I just want to thank the mayor for including that.
Very much.
Thank you.
Council Neff.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm with our mayor, and I would like to, I would like to, I would like to thank my, 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 but one minor question, I don't say, it's a very small amount, I just want you to know, about other properties, so this is. services, deep control. I know previous year you did not ask for money at all, and next year you asked $25,000, $1,000. I know you did, but why didn't you ask two years ago, and then next year you asked?
You're talking about within my mayor's office budget? That's what Counsel Lozey was just referring to. Over the last few years, the Slough Pond in particular and the Flax Pond to a lesser degree have had problems when people, for example, take their boats out into the ocean, they don't wash them down, then they put them on the pond. That foreign vegetation is introduced into Slough Pond. It starts to clog up the bottom, clogs up the wildlife, you know, the pond life that's in there, and to a lesser degree, it's also going on in Flax. So for the last few years, we've kind of scrounged around here and there, trying to find, I think it's $6,000 for one of them and $18,000 for the other, there are others, but it comes very close to $25,000. The problem is, if we're scrounging for the money and we can't find it, it costs even more the following year because you haven't had that ongoing maintenance and control of that vegetation. So this year, we're still spending the money and the same amount of money that we've always spent when we've been able to identify it as a little from here, a little from here. Hey, let's call the Water and Sewer Commission and see if they'll kick in $5,000. This way, the money is insured every year so that the vegetation is, we're keeping on top of vegetation so a year doesn't go by where it ends up getting worse and compounding the amount of money that we have to spend to clean it up again.
Do you think this would be enough? $5,000?
Yes. Well, this is only for those ponds. This is not for weed control throughout the community. This is Flax and Slough Pond, specific identified amounts for specific targeted vegetation.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.